Do we have any public participation at this time? Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Can you take the mic so people at home can hear you?
Right.
And if you could state your name for the record, please.
Dick Welch, former principal, school board member, resident parent, all that stuff. I just wanted to make a quick comment on the music program. Years back, when for whatever reason Middleton left us, and I believe it was we killed Goose, but excited them to leave town, but that's behind us. But I think we were reassured that the music, that no academic programs would suffer. And if I look at a budget, I might be misreading it, but I don't see a full-time music person at the high school. Maybe I'm wrong. Just tell me I'm wrong and I'll be happy.
You're not wrong.
Okay. I think it's malfeasance. I mean, that's too strong, but it's not right. That kids should not have suffered for what I consider adult blunders, whatever they were. Everybody makes mistakes, but the kids should not suffer for adult blunders.
Thank you. Other public participation. Okay. Go to approval minutes, minutes of September 11th, 2017, public session. Do I have a motion? So moved by Mrs. Moran and second by Ms. McElhenney. And discussion on these minutes. Any errors or omissions?
On page eight, perhaps you can go back to the video archive on this, but I don't remember the theater program being brought up at all. Was it as part of, under the portion where you were talking about the music program?
Is this just that one paragraph?
Yeah, it's just that one line, but... I guess I'll go back to the video to make sure, but I just don't want to mix topics if they weren't brought up.
Right. It was more around wanting...
Yes. It wasn't theater, it was feeder.
Feeder?
Feeder, like a program that gets this building and that going.
Yep.
There's a typo under donation for autism. It's Bobby with an E and Stormin is R, R.
What page?
N, N.
That was at the very beginning.
Page two?
Yep.
It's Bobby with an IE, two Rs, and it's M, A, N, N. Okay.
Anything else?
On page 14, when we come back into public to approve our non-public minutes we discussed in non-public, I believe it should say, it should read "as amended in non-public session" for those last three paragraphs.
When the motion's made?
Mm-hmm. Yes. The motion should say, move to approve as amended in non-public session.
Yeah.
And then this one, it's minor, but I do think it was important to the discussion on page nine, when we were talking about setting the tuition rate. Mrs. D'Netto's comments, she spoke a bit about court placements.
Correct.
Less about special needs and more about court placements.
I'm not sure that we want to say, first of all, I know I didn't say this, so we really need to change it. I can't remember exactly how I worded it, but it's not a student that's been tuitioned from another community.
Correct.
It's a student that came before us making, a student's parent came before the board to make a request. I think it's just a better way of putting it. Anything else? Any, no call for a vote, all those in favors amended? Aye. Minutes from September 11th, non-public session one.
Table for non-public discussion?
The motion from Mrs. Cardinal to table so that we can have a non-public discussion about these minutes. I have a second from Mr. Frida, all those in favor? Aye. September 11th, non-public session two. So moved by Mrs. Moran, second by Mr. Frida. Discussion on these.
I think it's the word union in this context, which should be replaced with bargaining unit. That's just the modern term.
Or the association.
Association, yep. Either one, I don't know. What the rest of you prefer? Either one works.
Association.
I like the association.
Yeah.
Anything else on these? No call for a vote, all those in favors amended? Aye. Non-public session three from September 11th.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Mrs. Cardinal, second by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion? All set? All those in favor? Aye. Non-public session four from September 11th. So moved by Mrs. Moran, second by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion?
I move to table these for our non-public discussions, right?
Move a motion to table. I have a second, I have a second by Ms. McElhenney. All those in favor? Aye. Non-public session five from September 11th. So moved by Mrs. Moran, second by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion?
I had in the third paragraph at the end, it should say an additional, not just 500 in longevity.
Yes.
Should say an additional 500 in longevity.
Yes.
Something more clarification.
Anything else? All those in favor as amended? Aye. And non-public session six, which is actually written a little incorrectly on the agenda. Says four again. The V and the I. So moved by Mrs. Moran.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cardinal. Discussion on these. All those in favor? Aye. Principal reports, little narratives that we got. With pictures, some with pictures.
I think she might have to go first.
I actually thought it was the lower elementary. I love it. I have value views first in our packet, so...
I'll talk to Jessica to mix it up.
We had a great start to the year. We had a great open house, had a lot of parents that came, registered their students, went to our resource fair. We had many raffles that were given out. One was a set of tickets to a Red Sox game, and the kids were ecstatic, and it actually went to two new students in our building, so they were, they thought it was great that their new school gave them Red Sox tickets. But it was really great to see parents. We had a lot of supportive parents came in. We have many parents who did fingerprint cards to volunteer. We actually ran out of fingerprint cards, so that we couldn't get everybody who really wanted to do that, but it was a nice turnout. The staff has been working, this summer they read the first six weeks book so that they could really input, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, but it is a responsive classroom book, and they really wanted to look, focus on that when we came back to school, and that's what they've been focusing on as a whole. Every staff member, paras, teachers, everyone received that book so that they could read it over the summer and really focus on establishing routines, establishing guidelines and expectations for the kids when they came back, and so that's gone really well. We've had some nice conversations around it, so it's been, it's been nice. We had just barely finished on Friday our STAR assessments to see where our kids are at and put them into groups, which started today, so they were really busy on Friday. And we're using the STAR assessment, and then we've been starting to use the Fryword list of the most frequently used words. And we have changed our focus slightly for our tier three groups. We were very program focused, and we are trying to move it towards more skill-based, so that we're really hitting those things that the kids are missing in their foundation and focusing on those skills to help them, you know, really make a solid foundation before they go to Mrs. Richardson. I do have a field trip that we're adding on November 11th. The first grade is looking at going to the Krista McAuliffe Planetarium, so, excuse me, the McAuliffe Shepherd Planetarium, they've changed the name. But they are looking to do that now that we've aligned our standards to the next generation science standards, that's, so they're looking at new field trips, and that's the one that they're looking at this year. So far, so good. Any questions?
The first six weeks, is it a newer edition, or is it the one that's been around for a while?
It has been around for a while, but we purchased the newest edition this summer. I think it was 2016 that it was updated, so we got the newest edition for any changes or things like that. Purchased that for every teacher and handed that out.
Okay. Thanks. Anything from board?
No, looks good.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
So we also had a very busy but productive start at Henry Wilson. Our open house, our new assistant principal, Mr. Coco, and I never left the doorway because people kept coming in throughout the whole time we were open, and our book fair ran the same night and was extremely successful this year. We have also been looking at our data. All students actually finished, we had one more student to finish this morning testing, so all data is ready to go for our second data meeting of the year tomorrow. We're going to be looking at their STAR data as well as any information that teachers have collected in their classes over the last couple of weeks. Their student says they're beginning to know them, and they'll be placed in math and reading RTI groups. And our data meetings are happening much more frequently this year. Excuse me, they're happening about two times a month, so we'll be able to make quicker shifts of students and target some skills faster than we were able to do last year. So it's nice getting into year two of something. Staff has also already worked once this year with, focusing on understanding by design with the consultant we talked to about last year, Andrea Reed. She's met with them to start fleshing out what they're doing for units for the year and really getting down to some curriculum work with them. It's hard work, but they're working, they're working really well, and they're working very hard with her, so. Are we also a focus of getting some behavior management going this year? And we have a person coming in to help us from Plymouth State University. He met with myself and Mr. Coco this morning, actually, to sort of flesh out a plan for the year of what that was going to look like and gathering data and, and working with the staff of creating some sort of new expectations in our building with a rollout of something for next year. So it's a year of work, it's a year of building and doing things right and not just rushing into something. Excuse me, sorry. We also have our student council getting off the ground, and they're going to be working in conjunction with the National Junior Honor Society. They're starting to plan some dances and other fundraisers and community service throughout the year for our whole school committee and new this year or new for a while. We're attending as many of the NELMs things as we can, and so Sarah Gould and Vicki Burnell are bringing a group of students to the leadership conference coming up in October. And sort of, it's just, it's been a year of planning ahead and being able to look at things and get things going and done, and it's, it's an exciting time, I think, to be in Henry Wilson, so.
Questions for Ms. Richardson?
Just some feedback about the student council. A group of 18 students is rather large for one student council.
She don't want to turn anybody away.
But each one of the students that I have encountered that's been accepted feels very special.
It's a very big process. They have to fill out a, get some recommendations and things.
Yeah, they were saying, interview and everything. I just wanted to commend the group already. They've applied for a mini grant to the PTA in order to purchase a replacement popcorn machine that can put out more popcorn. It's going to be a gluten-free snack, so, which is a need I hear, that needs to be met. But the intention is to raise funds to then give back into the M68 Hours of Hunger program. So here we have students that are going to be working together to, I mean, it's just creating an awesome win-win situation, so I just want to let you know the PTA members that were in favor of the mini, granting the mini grant, thought it was just such a wonderful endeavor.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Who is the professor from Plymouth?
Dr. Marcel Lebrun.
Lebrun, I remember Marcel Lebrun.
He's extremely excited to be working with Farmington again.
What I'm excited about is he was really big in that PBIS initiative when it first came out, so I'm excited.
I think will be his 66th school.
Yeah.
But he is, he just said, I'm looking forward to having fun. We've given him a lot of dates and a lot of time to come in and work with everyone, and...
That's excellent news, thank you. I was going to ask who to get, you know, who, what the qualifications were, but I have to do that. You know it. Excellent. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't send everyone the color copies of the pictures, though.
It's all online.
Sorry.
You do it hard copies too?
Well, they got the color online, but if they've got a print copy, it's black and white, so.
Okay, that's fine.
I actually thought it was very important that you get to see Farmington High School from the point of view that I get to see it, and so it was my initial reason to include pictures with my report. I also wanted to really highlight what's, at least from my point of view, of what staff are telling me, because it's kind of hard for me to judge after maybe less than 20 days here, the changes that they're indicating that they're making in response to a planet, a planet idea that I gave them in terms of innovation and that we are moving from what I had termed as a compliant society and a compliant educator to something where people become more innovative, and in that respect... For your perusal, not to be discussed this right here, this is something I'm basing my conversation with teachers on, about how to be innovative, where students are moving from that point of being passive to being active, where they get opportunities to create, to become something different. And what I think is the important part is at the top of that page, the old-school idea where they sit around and just kind of collect all the dots, and they make their big collection of things and off we go, to a point where they actually are starting to connect dots, and that was the premise I'm asking them to kind of start to do, and we'll certainly have many more discussions about that with them. Our first few days of school, and I'll come back as I keep getting the opportunities to talk to you every month, highlight some of those ideas further for you, and maybe a few more pictures. I think we've gotten off to what at first I was kind of shaky about was real time, because everything I kept hearing wasn't well-defined, or what are we going to do, or we don't have the software. Things have fallen into place, I think, nicely. We see the software, staff have quickly adapted to its use. It's rather intuitive and simpler in its nature. I think it's more of a question at this point in time is just to make sure everybody stays on the same page as we work through real time, and I suspect we'll probably be in a good place with real time by the end of this week. Software's have worked out, what people are supposed to be doing has worked out, and students are starting to really understand the power of real time, at least for the part of being an opportunity to remediate some of the issues they may have in class. We're in the slow process of adding components where they can actually enhance their education and opportunities for them to advance in some places, so that will be coming along later too. In that same vein, Jane Weymouth, who is due this, this school year, has been working as the ELO coordinator and with HISA, we currently don't have any students actively involved with HISA. We are trying to get one student involved with the HISA. That's been a work in progress. But the meantime, she's been very instrumental in working out other options for students in terms of expanding some opportunities for them. We have currently, I think the last number I had was 46 students at Farmington High School who are actively engaged with a BELAX course, so they're either working on that during real time, in place of a course, or on their own time as an independent study outside of the school hours. So there's 45 students that are doing that. Jane is also working on opportunities for students to do some career exploration, some physical education, alternative, she went on a little trip today to the YMCA to make some arrangements there. We're looking at some opportunities for students to work with other teachers in the other two buildings for those future educators, and so she's kind of coming up with a lot of those ideas and starting to make connections in the community to facilitate that process for us. And as those activities become viable activities, I actually would like to have the students come in and just briefly share with you what they've been doing outside the regular classroom walls. I think the other thing I'd like to talk a little bit about is as people start to have ideas about innovation, be excited for them. It's a push for classroom teachers to feel a little out of the comfort zone. It's even more so for students to feel the same way. So as you start to hear that conversation, be encouraging. Are we going to fail sometimes? Yes, we will, but failure is also part of that learning process, and that's going to build into that little idea of reflection that's the very power that's behind education. But thank you for this opportunity tonight.
Any questions for Dr. Moore?
How are the upperclassmen handling the shift from seven periods to six, other than they're in their least favorite classes a little bit longer?
I actually have not heard that one. I think the staff did a nice job explaining to them that they still could have their late arrival, early release time. They're a little upset in terms of the number of classes they couldn't get. I haven't quite delved into that. I think that's part of why some of these students are taking some of the BELAX courses, getting those opportunities in. But I think that other grumble part about too long, or can't get out at 11 o'clock, or whatever it may have been, is starting to die off. And I think that we'll see some of that change as they, you know, hopefully see a difference in their educational components within classrooms.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, do you have your, do you have a prepared report tonight, or student report? Would you like to share it this time?
I was wondering when there was. If that's now, then...
Sorry, we forgot to put on the agenda.
Hey, it's all right, it's all right. It's been months, so.
Right.
A minute while I sift this out. All right. As the 2017 to 2018 school year at Farmington High School begins, some of the initial events such as star testing, which was already mentioned, have already finished. The open house occurred last Thursday on the 14th and was, so I've been told, a success. All the fall sports have begun and teams are playing games, and the National Honor Society recently held its first meeting and is considering various fundraisers and an upcoming blood drive in November, which is way down the road. The group is also looking into attending a, well, not way down the road. The group is also looking into attending a conference on October 6th at the University of New Hampshire in Manchester, as all officers and multiple other members expressed interest. Looking to early next month, this year's college fair at Farmington High School will be held on Tuesday, October 10th, on a gym from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Homecoming Week is held that same week, starting on Tuesday, the 10th, with various events to be held throughout the week, to Saturday, October 14th. The pep rally's anticipated for Friday, October 13th, but to my knowledge, not confirmed. Furthermore, under our new principal, Dr. Moore, I have been assigned the responsibility as student representative to, in addition to providing current events, convey the student perspective and opinion on current changes such as real time and the new lunch program, which will allow future reports to much better reflect the student body and fully represent them, bring up any perceived issues. On that note, real time is up and running after a brief learning curve involving the software, and complications are close to being sorted out. Some students have expressed general frustration, but it is unclear whether it is due to the learning curve itself or real time itself. That may be determined in the near future.
Okay. Questions for Brian? Nice report.
And for anyone curious, I know that it was originally decided the second meeting in September was when Tigers to Tigers was going to come and meet with the school board. There have been delays for a few reasons. For one thing on my part, I kept sending emails with the survey in the wrong formats. So there's been, and we have yet to have a Tigers to Tigers meeting, so I am not entirely sure when the Tigers to Tigers group will be meeting with the school board regarding the HAD policy, but that won't be this meeting.
Okay. When you guys are ready, just let us know and we'll get you on the agenda, okay? Thank you, good job. Homecoming request?
I can...
Donna has a report.
Oh, yes.
Well, I know, but I just was going in order of the agenda.
Oh, I thought it was part of that.
Okay.
I could flip.
Okay. Dr. Moore, I mean, I can start. I'm guessing they'll have a question for you, so, for a follow-up. The request has been made that as part of homecoming festivities this year, we reinstitute having a bonfire as part of that. I've spoken with our facilities manager, if we were going to do that, it would need to be on the softball field, on the dirt. Obviously, we can't have it in the football field during football season. And I believe contact has been made with the fire department.
Yeah, sure. All the people have made contact with the fire department. They actually, they may be able to put a forestry truck on site with a couple volunteers. We're exploring the possibility of water that's out of the...
There's a hydrant out there.
That's out there, and there may also be out the closest building, which, I'm sorry, I can't remember what you call it. The brown one.
The FLA.
Okay.
The old FLA, yes. It needs a new name.
So that we can certainly have access. We know there's some power out there with a couple lights. We think we can probably either get some sort of music to play, so there's be some activities around for students, not just to stand around and look at the bonfire, but that, you know, there'd be varieties of activities that would just kind of promote a homecoming spirit.
In order to do that, we would need approval from the school board, and the fire permit needs to be, it's technically requested by the owner. Well, that's a little bit tougher for any of us to necessarily sign off on, but with board approval, I could then go down and request the permit, but I need a board vote to do that.
I'm sorry, Dr. Moore, did you say that they are, that they can be on site, or they could have one on site? You said something about the fire department having something on...
A forestry truck.
Okay, okay.
A water truck, or I'm not sure what you call it here, but you know, it's a water tank type thing.
Right. And there is a hydrant right there by the field as well.
Well, I move to approve this request for a bonfire for homecoming and apply for the permit.
Motion to approve by Mrs. Cardinal, second by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion?
What kind of, I understand it's going to be on the dirt part, but is it going to be big enough? I mean, is it going...
We're not looking at a major conflagration necessarily. I think keeping it somewhat contained. It will need to stay on that part. It can't go beyond, we need to keep it so that, number one, we're not destroying the field that we have.
Right.
And two, that we aren't, you know, letting it get away from us and then destroying everything else we have in the process. So it's contained in that area. It's not going to be a 50-foot tower, it'll be a bonfire.
I can tell you, other schools I have, we've had several bonfires and we use the pellets, and I usually give the students and the people putting it together, a number of pellets that cannot exceed, and so that there's a few left to the side we can just throw on as it, you know, slowly dies down. You know, 50 to 75 is usually a good fire for a couple hours of entertainment.
Are we incurring any additional costs doing this? Paying the fire department, any sort of fee?
At this point, we're talking about volunteers. If that changes, we'll let you know, but right now, we're, we're looking at, free is a good price point.
And you're planning it?
Yeah.
We've done it before. We just did it off-site, and it was very successful.
That's what I was going to ask, why did we stop doing it? It said reinstate, and I wonder what the rationale for reinstatement was, why did they want to reinstate it? Who wanted to reinstate it, and why?
My understanding is really to foster some more of that school spirit. The, the whole how-to-get-involved piece has been a little bit tougher in the last few years, and trying to help kids understand that there's, you know, there's a lot of activities that can be done to kind of foster school spirit. This isn't the only way to do it, obviously, but it's kind of one of those traditions that maybe their parents remember and can kind of, yep, let's, let's see what we can do with this, and...
I mean, my guess is too, that it's a very, as Dr. Moore's indicated, it's pretty popular to have a bonfire at a homecoming, and they probably see other schools doing it, and thought that would be cool if they did it here. You know, I don't know why it ended, to be honest. Could have been a shift in ADs, that someone didn't want to necessarily just take it on, it might have been too much. In fact, that's probably what it was. It was always very successful. It was always very, it was nice to have it. Any other discussion? No motion, a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. A report from our director of student services, Ms. Teneto.
Keeping with the narrative form. As well, just documenting that from July through September, there have been 10 home visits already, just to kind of make families aware, requirements for attendance, checking in, making sure everything's okay. We have had some new students join the school and it's been really great to see them. Henry Wilson receiving the most students with special education needs. They received six new students. Farmington High School, three, and then Valley View Community School, four new students. There are some kids that are, you know, still court involved. That number remains 17 and that reflects a smaller number of families. We had recertification for crisis prevention intervention with the administrative staff over the course of the summer. And in June, we had key staff members of the teachers trained, so we'd be ready going into this school year and having, you know, people begun the recertification process. August 25th, we had a presentation entitled Emotional First Aid for Students Affected by Substance Use, which is really well-attended by staff and community members. We had over 50 people there. The point of the presentation, and this is one that had been presented to parent educators before, was to look at what role adults can play in assisting students who, you know, are going through what can be a really difficult time. You know, what are some strategies to use? What are best practices? Some good news and part of what we'll ask you to, or Superintendent Vaughn will ask you in regards to next.
The other.
The other, yeah. Farmington School District was awarded a grant in the amount of $200,000 to be dispersed over the fiscal years for 2018 and 2019 to establish a student assistance program to aid in drug and, to aid regarding drug and alcohol misuse prevention. So that's, we're thrilled. We were one of 18 applicants. Six received the award. So we're really thrilled with this opportunity and what it presents. The way this would be developed, provided that the school board is willing to accept the funds, would be through a contracted service, because I know it's a concern, and we've heard that concern very clearly, about establishing something and how do you, you continue to fund it. There is an opportunity for fundraising it beyond the two years, but at this point, we've been awarded for the two years. Yeah, we're pretty excited about it.
And so whether we, I don't know if you want to do a vote to accept it now or if we want to do that in other, either way, whichever makes the most sense.
Make a motion to accept the grant. The New Hampshire governor and council.
So it's student assistance program grant.
Mr. Cardinal to accept that grant?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Frieda. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Any questions, Ms. Teneto, about the rest of her report?
Just thank you for all the hard work in applying for that grant.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Diana even drove it to conquer.
All right. We're going to talk about postal safes. Mr. Welch remembers those.
In both Valley View and Henry Wilson, there are very large postal safes that are perhaps outliving their usefulness. They are very large and the amount of materials that are housed in those safes take up a very small portion. These safes are like this. They're mammoth. And so we would like to declare those surplus. And I've been asked by our business administrator to ask for some latitude in our disposal in the event that we don't actually have collectors banging down the door for these. We might. They are not only large workable safes, but they also are postal memorabilia. So they're clearly marked, U.S. Post Office. Not really sure how we came to be the proud owners of these safes, but they are, we need the space that they're taking up.
Well, I guess that's my question. Do we own them? I mean, if they're, if they're labeled.
Well, I mean, it's, there are, they've been in the buildings. This, the one that's at Valley View went up when it was built. It was down at the old school and in fact, may have very well been put in before the door was put in. We're still working on that part, but.
Okay.
They're ours. We've had them for years, but it's, we're getting to the point where we need to reappropriate some of our storage space and not necessarily have it taken up by these behemoths. So if we can sell these, that would be wonderful. In the event that we can't sell them, we'd like some latitude to help them find good homes.
I typically don't allow public comment until public comment at the end, but can you shed some light on it for us? And if you can, can you take the mic?
Thank you.
Well, we just want people at home.
I vaguely remember probably in the 70s, an aide expressed to store valuable records
to keep them from burning up. And they were fireproof safes. That was the reason and everyone was happy they got them. I don't know, everything's electronic now probably, but it was to store, I don't know, student records. It's way back, but with student records or, or important school records, registers and that kind of thing, as far as I remember. They were so happy that they could do it, but we didn't have another format.
Right. We now have fireproof file cabinets that are much more user-friendly.
A motion to.
Your old colleague hiding in there.
We did check. There are no inhabitants. One-legged or two-legged.
Allow the superintendent, the latitude to make these go away.
Motion to declare these a surplus, seconded by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion? I thought I saw a handle over here.
Go ahead.
I do like how in the proposal, it was an option to perhaps scrap as metal. These are very heavy.
There are, there's a lot of metal involved in there, yes.
And there's that metal scrapping place on Route 11.
The metal farm.
The metal farm.
Yes.
If we can get them away.
Getting them onto a truck will be interesting, but yes, it's not an impossibility.
Mr. Frieda?
I would go the other way. I mean, I wouldn't just, I would just scrap metal, something historical and old. I would suggest if you can't sell them to someone, to ask the historical society if they would like.
They're, it's two and they're both very large, so unless the historical society has a lot of things that they're looking to use them for storage, and they might be, it might take up more real estate than they're willing to give up, but certainly willing to have the conversation.
And a concrete.
Yes. Concrete floor is a must. You do not want to put these upstairs anywhere.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Financials.
So this is the year-to-date, oops, I think I have multiple copies here. Not all of the encumbrances are set yet, as we've had still a few shifts for the beginning of the year. And Lori's not here to go through line by line. Are there any specific questions that you have?
I looked through and.
Yeah.
I remember when we adopted the budget back in November and then again, when we got our approved budget by the voters and it was a lesser amount, we had discussed field trips and the funding of field trips. On here, I only see the transportation for field trips.
Um, I.
I'm going to go back and look at our March documents to see what line items.
Right. I don't believe that field trips had been cut per se, so I will go back and look to see if one of the lines was assumed, but it shouldn't have been. So I will go back and look for that.
Because that was something that was actually added in.
Right.
From previous year to current school year.
Right.
Previously, it was on each grade or classroom to do their own fundraising or requests from other nonprofit organizations to fund the actual cost of the field trip. Busing has always been covered and it is an increase.
Right.
This year compared to last year, the transportation cost, but.
I will see where that line went.
Thank you.
I noticed a lot of overages in salaries and buybacks and health insurance.
Part of that is because there, as we looked at where things were budgeted for people who had been previously holding a position, there's shifts that still need to happen between buildings. It's going to come out, but not all of those lines have been shifted yet between buildings, so.
So it will balance out.
It should. It should, yes. That was one piece that Lori did say was still in process, so.
Okay. That was my question, too.
Other questions?
Any particular area? Administration?
Page 1, 2, 4. Regular, specialist. There was an increase in health insurance on page 12. My guess is that somebody went from not taking insurance to taking.
And it's, it's more likely that it's where someone, where there was another person in the position, so you've got a shift there as well.
Oh, I see what you're saying on page 12.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. But on those particular lines and encumbrances are, you know, what's expected?
Yes, because the, if it's encumbered, but there may be some shifts that still need to happen between lines to make sure that they're balanced, so.
When do you figure that we might actually see it start to balance out? Or will we always see it?
Balances should start to happen within the next two to three cycles through.
Okay.
At least that's my understanding.
Okay.
When is the next budget committee meeting?
Next Wednesday.
So this is the report.
We'll be providing these reports tonight.
This is the report that they'll be working on?
All three, actually.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to speak to revenues and.
Grants.
And so the grants that, the grant that you just approved tonight, obviously, is not in here. And there is another grant cycle that we are considering applying for that I'll bring to you in a little bit, too. Those are also not on here.
Well, those are state, though. That would be under revenues, right?
That would be under revenues, yes.
Did we, did we provide all the answers that we needed to from the last meeting? Are you set? Another one question.
There was one I just wanted to point out.
Okay.
The way we named an account, it was a concern, so it's been shared, it's been pointed out.
Okay.
I don't think they're expecting an answer back.
And will they also be getting that proposed budget schedule?
That's my next question. The working document that we reviewed on the 11th, any changes to that?
Not at this time.
Okay.
So that could certainly be shared as a dra, and with the understanding that it's a draft.
We're looking for feedback from them on the date.
Right. We're not railroading them into any of those dates. If there's any feedback, it's appreciated.
Great.
Anything else on financials?
I just had a general question. What is priority and focus? It's on page three on the revenue report.
The priority and focus grants are what has replaced the district improvement grants that the state used to do. So that is part of, those are state funds that are given to schools that are working on turning things around.
Okay.
Okay, any other old, excuse me, new business? Great old business, music program update.
So for the music program at this point, the changes that you, or the decrease that we have currently with our high school music program is, as you know, largely due to enrollment. It wasn't enrollment in those music classes. It wasn't cut just because Middleton withdrew, but because we were not finding students who were taking those courses as well. But part of getting that shifted around is building up the program that's beneath it to make sure that we have students who are actively seeking to continue music instruction at the high school level. And so one of the pieces that I am proposing is that, and we'll be discussing for later on tonight, some of the savings that we do have in, as we've had new staff come in, we've had some shifts in what was budgeted, we had some retirements. Most of those retirement savings were already figured into what we were looking at at the end of the year, because we knew those people were retiring. But we still had some, we budgeted kind of middle of the road and where we had people come in with less experience, it was a savings. Where we had people come in with more experience, it cost us a little bit more, but overall, there's savings in the line. I'm looking to take not quite $3,000 of that savings to make sure that I can run at least four after-school clubs so that we can do sectionals, lessons, that sort of thing, after school at the middle school level, so that, because right now, I have one teacher who does general music all day. I don't have an opportunity for band sectionals to happen. Looking at if I have two teachers who are running those and they do them the same day, that we would also have the opportunity to do some combined work that same day as well. And we would be able to take the issue of having transportation out of that, because the FAMI bus would be available. So students who did the early sectional could then stay for FAMI programming for the second hour. Kids who did the second could stay and do FAMI program for the first, so they won't be unsupervised, they won't be just around. That, those four clubs would account for a portion of, and then the other part of it would be to make sure that I have Yamaha recorders and books for each student. There's been a beginner program of sorts, but it's been really done on a very minimal shoestring in the last few years and hasn't really given an opportunity to make sure that students understand how to read music, that there's a strong base before they then go in and try to pick an instrument that they're going to perhaps use for the next several years up into high school. And so our dropout rate, if you will, for students, once they pick an instrument, has been fairly high, because they didn't necessarily have this solid background of knowing the music before they got into the next level. And so wanting to make sure that fourth and fifth grade both get that strong foundation this year as part of general music and then look at building the program from there. My goal is that next year, I can make that position a full-time position that would be, again, depending upon numbers, if I have a whole bunch, then I'll look at making full-time at the high school, but otherwise, have a full-time position that is part-time high school, part-time middle school band and chorus, and make sure that the schedules talk to one another so that that's possible, as opposed to, you know, we're trying to make things work in a vacuum. The other piece is to let folks know that in talking to the state this week, I was told, well, you've done the best you can. You don't have that many students enrolled, just drop the program. I'm not doing that. At this point, we have not had a great number of applicants banging down our door for a part-time position. Dr. Moore and I are looking at all kinds of alternatives to see what else we can do, whether it's individual music lessons, whether it's, you know, having students do some work at the other buildings, whether it's having students work with bands or courses with another district, making sure that we give our students an opportunity to continue with the program that, and granted, it doesn't look like a high school music program traditionally might, but what I want to do is make sure that I'm not saying no to opportunities to give the kids a chance to continue. Whether they are currently enrolled in that, I've got a few that are hanging on, or they would have been, but couldn't do it that way, I'm willing to talk to them and see what we can do for ELOs or what else can we work out so that we keep a music program at least the heart beating and then we'll do our best to get it off life support as quickly as possible. I'm not okay with just saying, well, I tried, done. You know, is it tempting to just say, okay, well, then I'll take that salary and then we can do some other things? Yes, but I'm looking at, right now, we have that salary and we'll see what else we can do to. do to support the music program for the kids who are still here and still wanting to do that, so.
Do you, have you, have you kind of polled the student body at Henry Wilson to see what kind of interests there is in that, in an after-school program, before we jump in?
Right now, there is, I wouldn't say it's huge, but I have a smattering across enough different instruments that it would probably make those sectionals viable. I'm not looking at probably 45 students, but I'm probably looking at enough to run it. If, obviously, if I don't have enough, then I won't run. But I'm also looking at, we need to start somewhere, and the club stipends are frankly not large, they're $325 apiece. But if I can at least get something rolling, I think it's well worth it.
Ms. Franklin?
I just have a couple of questions. First off, did you identify why there was such a lack of participation at the high school level? Does it have anything to do with the change in the bell schedule?
Participation last year was also not particularly high, so I would say the answer to that is a pretty safe no. I think the fact that we've not had a strong band and chorus program at the middle school level certainly has not done a whole lot to support having that program at the high school level. We've had general music for the last few years, but it's been a while since we've had two full-time music teachers at the middle school. And while I don't know that I can get it back to two full-time, I think we need to look to see what we can do to get band and chorus back into the school day, also to make more instruments available to students. And we're looking to see if we can get a program together, too, so that if people have instruments that they'd like to donate, we have a way for them to do that. I'm still working out so that I don't put out something and then, you know, my legal folks say, "No, that's not how you do it." So as soon as I have that part nailed down, I will let you know. But we're, we're hoping to be able to do some more grassroots support and really do it right, as opposed to just, well, we'll just hire somebody and throw them in and off it'll go. If there's no musical foundation here, it's not gonna go here, so this part needs to get strengthened. So that's what I'm hoping to infuse a bit.
And my other question was, is there an option regarding the BLAX route for the music program?
Not really. It's tough to do performance music virtually. There's music appreciation courses that can be taken online, but it's tougher to do performance and have it done that way. Certainly willing to go any route that somebody's comfortable with, but if you're trying to do particularly beginning band, that sort of thing, it lacks a certain something playing a trombone in front of a computer, so.
Sure, just trying to explore all options at this point.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Mrs. Cardinal?
Just because I have no clue on this question, what is a viable number of students in order to warrant a position?
I'm looking if I can get a sectional of at least five. I think that that would be a start. We've not had numbers that have been rivaling that for a while, but I know that there's been quite a few inquiries about what can we do, what can we do? And so right now, this is what I know I can do, and I'll put it out there, and then we'll see from there what else we can do from there, so.
And then you mentioned four after-school sectional clubs. So really, you're looking for a total of 20 students. Could each one of, and maybe this is for a non-public session, could each one of these sectional clubs be considered its own club as far as stipend purposes?
It would be.
Okay.
It would be.
And then when you were talking about students who need parent transportation using FAMI and the transportation benefit that we have through that grant, it doesn't necessarily mean a student, one of those 20 students who's participating in a sectional club has to be enrolled in FAMI?
No, no, they don't have to.
Has to take the FAMI bus?
No, it's an option.
If they have personal transportation.
Absolutely.
Through a parent or guardian or family member, that's quite all right.
Absolutely, yep. It's an option to remove that barrier if transportation is the problem.
And then along the lines of this after-school, four sectional clubs, you know, idea to maintain the program, at least at the level it's at now, would you update the posting for the part-time high school position to that effect, so that individuals who might be interested in the hours that this structure represents?
Right now, I have music teachers in district who are interested.
Okay.
And so that would be a possibility. And then I would be looking at, for high school, if, if we need to look at a similar structure, I'm certainly open to that.
Would you necessarily advertise it that way?
Well, I don't know that I would have somebody coming in to do that sort of thing for that much. If they're already working here, they might do as an additional, but we'll see. I'm willing to see what's possible. I'm not trying to put up additional roadblocks, we have enough of those.
But I, I think I can see where you come from, maybe Milton or New Durham.
Yeah, if there's a surrounding district that has a part-time teacher for morning hours, they could possibly come to want to teach to one of the later blocks in after-school.
Certainly open to that.
Other questions? Is general music education still a requirement under state minimum standards?
Yes.
How many minutes? Do we know? I'm sorry, that's probably a unfair question.
I don't have it off the top of my head. I will certainly work it up for you.
For K to eight.
For K to eight. For high school, we are required to offer courses in the arts, which we would have covered through other classes. But I'm not looking to drop this program. And I want to make that clear.
Well, my wheels are turning, that's why I'm asking some pre-questions. How many periods a day does the Valley View Music Teacher teach?
Five? Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, you can yell it out and I can repeat it, too.
You almost have them trained to go to the mic.
The daily schedule changes, but she does every grade level. So we have four classes per grade, and she also does both preschool classes, so she does our morning, two, our two morning preschool classes and our two afternoon preschool classes. So some days she has, you know, more classes than others. I don't have it right in front of me, so I can't tell you exactly, but every day she does have all of those groups, most of those groups.
So what's the max period she teaches a day?
Eight. But like the preschool, like 20 minutes.
Yeah, a little bit of chunks.
Preschool is really short because they're.
Attention span?
Yes. They can only last like 15, 20 minutes.
But she's, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Just to clarify, it's equivalent to the other UA's, Unified Arts?
Yeah, all the UA's do the same, the same thing. And the only other thing is the PE teacher teaches health as well.
If we hypothetically had a full-time position at the high school, even though right now numbers don't seem to warrant that, could that position potentially spend half a day at Henry Wilson and take the general music education blocks and split them into general music and those that want to do band or chorus? And couldn't they still accomplish those standards?
The problem with splitting right now is the fact that Henry Wilson's blocks rotate and the high schools do not. And so to try to do that schedule with somebody between buildings is very, very difficult right now, if not an impossibility. The UA's schedule doesn't rotate, but everybody else does. So first period is maybe, starts at eight o'clock this morning, but it might be nine o'clock tomorrow and 10 o'clock the next day. So it, it's a moving target.
Okay.
That's why we're looking at starting earlier next year to see what else we can do to make that possible between the buildings for next year.
Any other questions?
Just, you know, in terms of regaining interest amongst the student body in music and the music program, I just wanted to let you know that there is a plug-and-play performance competition that the National PTA puts on, and our school district currently participates in only the visual arts categories of that competition. It's local competition, then the winners go on to state, and then the winners from the state go on to national competition. All of those activities have to be done on their own. There's rules about what adult participation can be in their performance pieces, but it would be an awesome, awesome thing if next year, or maybe in two years, when our music program is rebuilt, students were introduced to this.
Well, and how high does it, does it go up through high school? Because I have some high school students.
Preschool through.
Who are looking for a place to compete and perform now.
Excellent.
So, perfect.
It might also be nice.
It's called reflections, in case you want to look up the information.
To, to bring in, we used to have performances where performing artists came in and they really drove the students to want to do what they do. And I haven't seen a lot of.
Artist-in-residence programs.
Yes. Not just artist-in-residence, but like up with people and those kind of performances.
Yeah, the Army Band used to come in and.
Yeah. So if we could get more visual for them to see what it could be.
Sorry, just another question popped in my head. Why is it, and I'm sure there's a laundry list of pros and cons, but are school performances, especially for the lower grades, because we do have, you know, every student is invited to participate in the evening performances twice a year at least, why are they held in our gymnasiums and not at the opera house?
Because our gymnasiums have a higher capacity.
Okay. Because I just think that opera house is so cool for that purpose.
Any other questions, I just got an update on the music program. Thank you.
Was there a motion for the $3,000?
Just, just information. Information, yeah.
Minutes posting and calendar updates.
So the minutes, thank you, Mrs. Tivnan, for her Herculean efforts. Between Kelly and Joss and I, we've kind of shuffled things around, and there are folders now for 16, 17, and 18 on the web, and minutes in all of them. So you should have access to, as of this afternoon, things were popping in, it took a little bit of time, I knew they were coming, and as we were, okay, I see it, I don't see it, it's not there, it is there, and so I'd love for somebody else to test it and make sure that it's, but I was able to see it both from the school network and from home, so that gave me at least a little bit of, but you should see a whole lot.
I did test it, and they seem to all be there.
Awesome, yay, okay, thank you. And on the calendar, I know that the request was to have a single calendar, so at least until we get another system down, we're, through my office, we're taking what's on the school calendars and making sure that it's at least populated on that single district calendar that's on the SAU website. If you scroll all the way down, it's at the bottom. But at least we've got a single place where things are, and then as we see things, we'll continue to add. And there's a simple way to populate from one from the other, but we're still working some of those logistics out. So in the meantime, we're, we've added quite a bit of content, and more is coming.
That's all made public, correct?
It's all public, yes. That's on the, on the front of the website, website, that's, yeah.
We have an other here, which is newer.
Okay, so.
Can I bring something up to the other? Just, can, can we at some point discuss the policy about the digital use and all that so we can get the nomenclature and the naming of files and the file system encoded so that we can start to do it properly?
And then the other thing is, we need to probably look at the 91A pieces, but.
Thank you for sharing that, Stan.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, did you get that in the notes, too?
It's, yeah, it's in the Farmington folder, and I was, I was going, when I found it, I was going to try to put it in tonight's folder and then realized if I did that, I would probably mess people up, since you told them where it was, so I left it alone, but.
Just so that everybody knows what we're talking about, there are some changes to the right-to-know law that are going to be into effect January 1 of 2018. So Stan attended a webinar on those changes so that we can all be educated, well before they go into effect.
Proactivity.
Okay.
The only other other, since we did the grant for the student assistance piece, there is a robotics grant that's available through the state, and all three schools at this point are looking to apply for that robotics grant. We have some very excited folks who've agreed to jump on as advisors. We have a higher ed assistant through Great Bay. We are looking at some partnerships with other schools who've been down the road a little bit ahead of us and are willing to say, "Here's a speed bump and there's a pothole." And we're in the process of trying to get some sponsors, some, the grants are generous, but they just barely get us in the pond. And so looking to see what we can do to get things in a pretty good spot before we necessarily say we're up and rolling, although it's kind of one of those, we have to kind of build it as we're going, because the grant applications are due September 30th, there's not a whole lot of time to get things going. So what I'm looking for is to let you know that, yes, we are looking to apply, to give, to give you an opportunity to weigh in and say, "Yes, please go forth and do so," or if you're going to say, "Please don't," then please say now before we get too much further down the track. Right now, we have between 18 and 20 kids at the middle school who are interested. We're looking at doing three teams, three through five, six through eight, and then high school. And we have at least, I think, 10 kids at the high school who've said, "There's a strong pot, yeah, I want to do that." And elementary, lower, middle, we're still working on some of the numbers, but folks that I've talked to have been like, "Oh, really? Oh, I, this one, and this, hold on, hold on, the grant, the ink's not dry on the grant application yet, we're getting there." But we will have a list of, here are tools that we need, here are opportunities for donations, if somebody is interested in helping, volunteering, you don't have to know a lot, you have to be willing to help kids explore. If we have engineers out there who want to jump in, too, who have a little expertise, that'd be awesome, but we're looking just for getting things out of the starting gate and opening some other opportunities for our kids who, you know, get to see some application of what they're learning, so. And it's just fun.
Can you share the dollar amount and where all three of our schools are applying?
Sure.
That amount, that's three?
Well, we get, for the high school, there's kit and stipend together, it's about $6,500 total. For the middle school, it's about $2,500. For the elementary school, it's 15, I think, when you combine the two. And so we would be looking at the three grants combined, but it's, you know, so it's a little bit more, but it's a whole lot more involved at the high school. But looking to possibly open things up, too, even if you, you might not have 18 kids working on one robot at once, but there's a whole lot of opportunity for kids to be learning coding, for kids to be looking at other pieces, even if we just start a coding club. So, you know, lots of possibilities, lots of places this could go. And I've been talking to folks at other schools who are pretty rabidly excited about this sort of thing, and they've been more than willing to field questions, so that's been helpful, too.
Great, thank you.
So is that a go forth and apply?
Yes.
Okay.
Public participation.
I am glad to see that you're working on trying to do something for the music. I've heard that music helps the mathematics, and I'm still disappointed that Joel's solution wouldn't have worked, because it sounded great until I remembered scheduling not working. I don't know if anybody said it, couldn't hear everything that was said. I don't know if anybody said it, couldn't hear everything that was said. What does the music program do to high schools? What are you doing? You're trying to get it re?
Accredited.
Accredited. What does that do to accreditation?
At this point, I don't think it's necessarily a, you can't be accredited if, but if it's not fully back to full-time. Certainly, the self-study portion at this point really points more toward, where are you now and what are you doing about it? And certainly, we're not looking to have it just dwindle away.
And what's the total grant you're applying for, the numbers you just read?
For the robotics?
Yes. Walmart? Is it possible? They brag about doing things. I'd see if I could get some money out of Albany International Siren. I used to work there, so, I mean, everybody I know is gone, the guy sold out the company I worked for to Albany, and then Albany.
So, name dropping your name isn't going to help us necessarily.
Whatever, you know. But I might try to compose something and send it to them, I don't know if it'll work or not. I thought you were looking for like $20,000.
You know, at this point, looking for anything we can get. If we get rolling in competitions, we could certainly need that in a given year. This first year, we understand that we are taking baby steps, and we're going to have to figure out where we are, we'll probably, you know, become, well, we might have a very well-decked-out robot, but it might not win the nimble.
Might not work.
It might not win the nimble award right off the bat, it might.
Is this a Dean Kamen grants?
This is through the state, through the DOE, and so.
Is that Kamen and the DOE? He's the?
He has a influential.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
He hasn't given me a segue yet, though.
The guy who bought Segway drove off a cliff in England on one.
Oh, dear. Maybe I don't, maybe I don't want one so much now.
Any other public participation? Our next school board meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 2, at 6:30, right here. We thank those of you who came out tonight, we thank those of you viewing from home. I think we're probably going into contract personnel first?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion going to non-public session one under RSA 91A, colon, 3, 2, A, B, and C, for contract and personnel issues.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Moore, and second by Mr. Frieder. Are all those in favor by roll?
Aye.
Good night, folks.
Thank you.